I think now we're ready, okay. In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof with the municipal clerk on January 7th, 2013. Excuse me? Faxing a copy thereof to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 8th, 2013, at 8:47 a.m. and posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board on the main floor of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on January 8th, 2013, at 9 a.m. The fire exits are to my left and right, your right and left respectively. I would ask both members of the public, as well as those on the dais, to speak into the microphones, and if anybody needs, we do have assisted listening devices available. Jim, would you read this in the pageable regions, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you call the line, please?
Mayor Minkoff.
Here.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler.
Here.
Councilman Erickson.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilman Malley.
Here.
Councilman Potts.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilkowitz.
Here.
Board Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Board Administrator Kovak.
Here.
Okay, I'm going to ask Councilmember Foster Dublin to formally introduce our next presentation, but I would just like to personally recognize Freeholder Jim Polos for all the amazing work that he has done and the generosity that he has facilitated from the Board of Chosen Freeholders of Middlesex County. Thank you very much. Tonight, I know that Jim is here in his volunteer capacity as our recently appointed OEM Coordinator. Thank you very much for ably stepping in and filling that role for us. You know, I think that we're all tremendously grateful and extremely appreciative for what you've done and have tremendous confidence in what it is that you plan to continue to do on our behalf. Elsie, would you like to take over this portion of the program, please?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Freeholder Polos is here, and he is our new Director, I'm happy to say, of OEM. And since his very short tenure of being appointed this spring, manuals are just about all up to date. We have had more security and tabletops and devices in town than we've ever had, dating back to our first outdoor event. We have had all kinds of goodies and skyscraper stuff in the sky to keep us all safe, and I'm not going to give too much away, but they're working on some really, really fantastic things that's going to happen to all around safety and public safety and public awareness. And we have been doing a lot of news, the NICSEL newsletter, with safety tips and safety precautions that he has put in place. And at this time, I would like to introduce Freeholder Polos for the OEM presentation, but also, I just heard that in 1983, he was appointed to OEM. Same time, same date, 2013, 1983, so you've been around forever doing a lot of wonderful things for Highland Park.
I'm sure he appreciates being reminded of his age, too.
A lifelong service.
We call that seasoning. Yeah, whatever works best, and you know, if you just want to grab a mic, Jim. Gary, do you have a way to get a close-up of this somehow, or you know, is that camera portable in some way? What's the best way for us to?
Is there?
Oh, okay.
Okay. He was always going to say, put it under.
I just wanted to thank the Mayor and the Council for this opportunity to come here this evening to present a little information about what's been going on in emergency management, and before I do that, to tell you a little bit about some of the planning and projects and so forth that we're involved in. I want to first thank the governing body, not as the OEM Coordinator, but really as a resident, for the commitment that this governing body has to public safety in the community. I always was able to recognize that. I serve as Chairman of Public Safety for the county in my freeholder capacity, and I've always been very involved in public safety in Highland Park for many years, as you know, but I've seen in short order, as the OEM Coordinator, the real fundamental support that you give to the emergency services here. I've heard it from our police department, I've heard it from our fire department, and now I've been able to see it firsthand. I want to particularly thank Elsie, as Chair of Public Safety. She is not only attending the meetings, but intimately involved, very supportive of the initiatives, always willing to give a hand, very supportive of new ideas, as the Mayor and the rest of the Council have been, so compliments to you as a freeholder, as an OEM Coordinator, and as a resident, for making Highland Park a safe community. You did a yeoman's job a year ago. We were still drying out basements, pumping out water, fixing things here across the state. Many communities were hit a lot harder than Highland Park was, but Highland Park really stepped up to the plate to provide great services to their residents, and that's a compliment to all of you. What we're hoping to do now with emergency management is to plan even better for the future, learn from our mistakes, learn from our experiences, and try to make Highland Park even better prepared in the event there's another superstorm, Sandy lurking somewhere out there, and that may very well be the case. I want to thank also Chief Risco, and in his absence, Captain Golden, for their support in asking me to serve in this capacity. Elsie's right, I guess it was 1983 when I first served as the first Coordinator in Highland Park for about 15 or 18 years. Emergency management has changed a lot since that time, and it really is an important and essential element of public safety. And again, the commitment you have made to it is a wonderful thing here in Highland Park. I hope to be able, in my capacity, to orchestrate the great services that we have here as a Coordinator, so that we are better prepared, that we communicate better, and that we also commit things to writing, so that we have a plan in place in the event any type of emergency would affect or impact Highland Park. As Elsie mentioned, we have been working not only on the operating plan, which is a requirement, a state law requirement, and that's being updated as per the state regulations, but more importantly, we've been doing something called Tabletop IAPs. These are incident action plans that we've been developing for various types of events that occur throughout Highland Park. Some of them are social, some of them may not be. We have created IAPs, and I brought an example of one here today, where we sit down as a group, as an emergency management council, and we actually develop a plan of what we're going to be responding to. I guess I can do that. This is an example of our IAP. And included in this plan are specific responsibilities of the different services, police, fire, EMS, public works. We develop not only a response plan, but also try to take into account different situations that can occur. The plans are generated from not only our own experiences from the community, but we also tap into resources that have been provided to us through incidents that have occurred nationwide. I'll point to the Indiana State Fair stage collapse that you might have heard about in 2011, clearly the Boston bombing that occurred just a year ago. These situations have been analyzed by experts in the industry, from federal experts, congressional people, reports have been created to tell other municipalities the best way to prepare for these kinds of eventualities. We've implemented some of that knowledge in trying to develop these plans, so that we not only create perimeters for security, we've created specific responsibilities for public works, and I'll give you an example. In our recent tabletops, we talked about the role of public works, and what we realize is, is that in an incident, we need to do crowd control.
So, Jim, would you, I apologize, just for people who may not be familiar with the term tabletop, would you just indulge us with a two-sentence definition, just so people would understand in lay terms what that is?
Sir, what we try to do is, is we try to come up with programs and scenarios that we're able to respond to. So, one tabletop exercise would be, how do we respond and prepare for the Arts Festival in this instance? And what we talk about is, is how many people will be coming, where will our emergency services be located, what type of additional emergency services may need to respond to the community in the event of an emergency? We have cooperative arrangements with police departments and fire departments and first aid squads that surround Highland Park. Who would they be? What order would they be called in? Where would they respond to? We talk about something called staging areas, where does that equipment report to, so that it can be dispatched to the scene? And again, we've even incorporated public works. We, at these events, you may notice some of our sanitation trucks that are staged throughout the area. We could use those to close off streets, to be able to reduce traffic flow, help provide an emergency ingress and egress into the incident. So, we go through a very detailed program with each incident, create a written IAP. We've done it now for street fair, for the July 4th, for the Arts Festival, and with the assistance of Captain Golden, we're going to be looking at some other situations that also exist in Highland Park. We're going to be attending an event next week at the nursing home on River Road, and going through a drill exercise there, where we'll be developing an IAP. We'll be developing them for our senior citizen building, for the AHEPA Hall, and then we're also going to be looking to do that for some of the schools in the community as well. Even though they're already prepared, we want to create specific incident action plans. We're also working on trying to improve the amount of equipment that we have available to us. As Elsie mentioned, at some of these events, you may have seen some new equipment that you may not have seen before. We had an eye in the sky, something that's available through our prosecutor's office, which gives the police department a view of the, an aerial view of the entire incident. We're using command centers now at these incidents, so that we have representatives from the various disciplines in one location to be able to respond. We're staging equipment, supplies, medical supplies, in advance of these events, so that we're able to respond in a much more efficient way. And we're also trying to prepare for, again, another emergency that could occur, where we have to house people. I've been able to arrange through our county, and thanks to Middlesex County, we're going to be receiving very shortly a trailer full of equipment with 75 brand-new cots, blankets, supplies, hygiene kits, generators, so that we can create an actual shelter if we need to, and we're thinking of doing it back here in the rec center, but we'll have it all in one location, we'll be able to respond and be able to equip it properly. One of the other things that we're doing, and this was at the request of Councilwoman Dublin, is pursuing the creation of a CERT team. It's a civilian emergency response team. We've done some promotion of that event, and I'm pleased to tell you that right now we have, I think, 11 people who have expressed interest in participating, which is great. We're hoping for 10, I think we have 11. We'll be doing some training. I'm a certified trainer, Officer Alara, Sergeant Alara, I should say, from the police department is also certified, so we'll be running a training course in the borough to train these individuals to assist in large-scale emergencies or at community events. They'll receive basic training in first aid, communications, search and rescue. It's about a 20-hour course, we'll be putting it over probably a five- or six-week period, and they will become certified CERT members to supplement our police, fire, first aid in Highland Park, to assist with things like traffic, crowd control, assistance in our shelters, should we create them. They'll have some great functions here in the community, I think they'll be a very valuable asset, and I'm excited about the breadth and diversity of the individuals who have expressed interest in participating. So, we hope to have that up and running before the end of the year, with some training starting the beginning of next year. We're looking for some additional grants, to try to bring some more funds into the community, to see if we can purchase some additional equipment that might be necessary, and we're also looking to try to, at the county level, upgrade our communications equipment, which will be a benefit to our police and fire people here in the community. So, emergency management's been very active in those short few months that we've been working together. I think that we have a lot of good things that still are left to do. We have great people working on the council. I want to thank again the governing body for their support, and we're looking forward to 2014.
Thank you very much. If you would indulge us, I was just going to say, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Just one quick one. I know it's been for years the problem of radio frequencies and availability of a frequency available to all responders, is that part of the plan moving forward? I know it was discussed in the construction of the new building and the towers there, so I'm just wondering what specifics you might have on that issue.
I can tell you from the county's perspective, the county has an 800 megahertz system. In fact, Highland Park is on that system. We offered that to Highland Park, I guess, about two years ago, Captain, and we have two other communities on that system currently. When I took over public safety two years ago, I actually halted any additional communities coming onto the band, because we have some internal operational issues and problems with the system. We saw that in a couple of situations where we lost radio contact, we had a significant problem during superstorm Sandy. So, we basically put additional communities on hold to participate. We are investing, as of the first of the year, about $3 million into a new microwave system that will create really a redundant system that we think will give us 99.9% efficiency and response capability. Once that's up and running, it's our intention to then go around to our communities and re-market our countywide system, because we'll have confidence in its ability to be able to provide service. At that time, if Highland Park wants to expand either fire or first aid to come onto the 800-megahertz system, we certainly would look forward to that opportunity. Currently, I believe that there is a borough-wide channel that we're all able to get onto, to be able to communicate amongst each other. It's a wraparound channel, and during a major emergency, there is a communication link between the services, but moving fire and first aid onto the 800-megahertz system would be a great thing. There is some expense involved in it, maybe it's something that could be looked at in the future for capital.
Thanks for the update.
Do you need a pilot to try that out on?
For the radios?
Yes.
Why don't we just put the freeholder on the spot? Why don't we just put you on the spot?
Mayor, if I can?
Please, yes you may.
Jim, excellent job, Elsie, you too. Really great to hear how you have moved so quickly in a direction that we hadn't even foreseen at the time of Sandy last year. As you work towards communicating amongst all the other OEM parts of this program, please let us know through our communications committee and our on-staff communications people how we can coordinate, so messages can clearly go out from your group to the residents.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. I think we've had some conversations about that, and you've been so helpful in trying to get information out, the NICSEL messages, as you mentioned. I think we're talking, but we came up with a single-page document for response, and I know that we're looking at trying to maybe integrate something into all the apartments in the community.
Right.
Sometimes the residents in those apartments are not as engaged in the community operations, so getting something into their apartment to tell them how to prepare for an emergency would be a great thing to do, and I know you all have been very supportive of that.
Yes.
So, we'll continue to try to float some new ideas and see how we can get the message out.
Great, but note that there are people who can help you with that.
Excellent, and they've been very helpful already. I also should thank Jeff Morris, my predecessor, who's doing such a great job in keeping emergency management operating and functioning in the community. He did a wonderful job, had a great reputation in the county, and appreciate all his help in this transition of taking over that operation, so credit and thank you to him as well.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, any other questions or comments? Yes, Susie?
Thank you very much, it's very informative, and it's nice to know that when we're having all these events, that you've already thought about all these things. Just wondered, would encourage you, I know you mentioned a couple of buildings that you were looking at to revue stuff with, the Housing Authority, I don't know if you mentioned them. So, okay, good, just wanted to make sure, because they did have an issue with the sprinkler fail, they might have some, they've already experienced something in not-too-distant past, so it might be helpful to you, too.
I agree, and we, I think that Captain and I had spoken about setting up specific individual meetings with that, I call it the senior citizen building, the Housing Authority and the AHEPA as individual buildings, and then planning with individual IAPs for them. And just in closing, we've also kind of just changed the protocols, I think emergency management's been very responsive. I know I've responded to probably a dozen calls already in the last few months from fire emergencies, power outages at our Sony apartments, and so again, it's been a very good cooperative working relationship with everyone involved, so I thank everyone for that as well.
I think this is great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Freeholder. You've really put us light years ahead, and I truly am appreciative of all the work that you have done, because we have moved a tremendous, we did a complete 360, and I'm very grateful that we're where we need to be, and we're looking far into the future and making everything just move right. So, I guess your 30 years of volunteerism has paid off. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I must have my Jarrett all in.
Elsie, you keep saying that, there's got to be a point at which Jim starts blushing or something. Thank you very much for coming, and the briefing was really outstanding, and I know you have to run, but you know, we're all very grateful, and I think we can all sleep better at night for the work that you and your team are doing, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for all your support.
Okay. Just a few more things I would like to report on, that last month, in October, we had Operation Take Back, and that was a program that we did to take back old and expired medication from anyone in town who wanted us to turn them into the senior center, and we had that for two days, and I'm happy to report that Sergeant Alara, who was in charge of that program, he was able to take back 30 pounds of unused medication, and which did not go into, get flushed down the toilet and go into our system to poison our sea life there, but the medicine was actually taken back, and it's going to be taken to a proper place where we'll be disposed of. So, that was a great success. Also, fire prevention month was last month, and everyone was advised to change the batteries and the thermostat, and your smoke alarm systems and everything else like that. But the fire department also had a demonstration, kitchen fires. Every year, there's a different theme. Last month, there was a theme about kitchen fires, how to properly dispose of kitchen fires, should you have one, and that was very informative. You can go on their website, and there's more information that you can have about that. And last but not least, is something that I'm particularly proud of, that we had our Veterans Day Parade yesterday here in Highland Park, and I am very happy to report that we had approximately 700 students from Irvin, Bardell, the middle school and high school that participated in that event, and that's something that I've been advocating for for many, many years, and I'm really pleased to see children of all ages that were out and, you know, showing their patriotic pride, and the little ones from Irvin School, they all wore, they had paper hats made up, and red, white, and blue, and it was really great to see them understanding and appreciating what the men and women in our service, in all areas of service, what they have gone through and how much they gave, and it was their way of saying thank you, and I was really happy that our younger generation is involved in understanding and will be embracing this. So, thanks to everyone that participated yesterday. That's my report.
Thank you very much. All great stuff, and I would, I would just like to put an exclamation point on the last thing you said about Veterans Day. I wasn't able to be there yesterday because of my teaching schedule, but I did hear, and I had heard in advance, and I did hear that there were these 700 young people there from the schools, and I just, I think that's absolutely a magnificent tribute to the veterans, and Elsie, I'd like to thank you because of the hard work that you provide in supporting and facilitating the relationship that we have with the Veterans Alliance, and you know, both this and the Memorial Day Parade, and Susie, our school liaison, and the Board of Ed, and the administration in the school district. I mean, this is really very much a team effort, and the community benefits from this in multiple ways. And aside from the gratitude that the young people wind up demonstrating to the veterans, I know how much they appreciate the fact that it gives them a chance to, on a variety of levels, sort of communicate the importance of this call to duty that they observed, you know, and the willingness to sacrifice, and I know that that means a great deal to them on a lot of levels. I mean, I've heard it expressed on a very personal basis, and so I just think that that was really wonderful that that happened, and so thanks to everybody for making that a reality. Okay, I'm assuming that we do not have a Main Street Minute this evening, since we don't seem to have it, do we? I don't think we do.
I do report on it.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine, so I'm going to skip the Main Street Minute in a formal way, and I'm going to let Councilmember Beryl Mittler, when we do the council reports in just a minute, absorb that, if you will, or integrate that into her report. But since we started on this side, and Elsie was nice enough to give us her report, then I'm going to continue to work from this side of the dais, if I may, and Councilman Potts, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to, we're coming up, before you know it, 2013 will be history almost, but we have a couple of events still coming up for our seniors. As we approach the end of the year, our annual Thanksgiving dinner for our senior citizens will be Monday, November 25th, and that's going to start at 12 noon in the Senior Youth Center. And also, the senior holiday party this year will be held on December 16th from 11:30 to 2:30, and that's going to be held at Italian Bistro Restaurant located on Raritan Avenue for our seniors. So, there'll be two special dinners coming up between now and the end of the year. In our rec department area, just want to mention, we have indoor soccer clinics for boys and girls ages three through 12 coming up, and the registrations are due by December 13th, so there are forms out there, and you can also contact the Department of Community Services to receive registration forms or download those from the website as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention, this holiday season, the Borough of Highland Park will again come together to have a special Christmas dinner for all to enjoy. That's going to be held on Christmas Day, December 25th, from 1 to 3 p.m. at the Highland Park Senior Youth Center on South Sixth Avenue. The Borough is accepting cash contributions to help defray the cost of that, or if people would like to donate specific items, you can contact the Department of Community Services, and they'll be able to specifically give you some details on items that could be used to help make that event a success. There's also volunteer opportunities for cooking, serving, and cleaning as part of that dinner as well on Christmas Day. So, if any of our residents are looking for a place to go and spend the day, or would want to get involved and help our community in a great event, I would strongly suggest you contact the Department of Community Services to be a part of that special day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few things to report on, if you'll indulge me, and if my voice holds out. First, very important, please save the date. On Monday, December 9th, and Tuesday, December 10th, Highland Park Board of Health is delighted to present two special sessions on the Affordable Care Act. The Affordable Care Act is a significant regulatory overhaul of the nation's health care system. It increases access to affordable health insurance and lowers costs to individuals by making common preventative services available at no cost. First, on Monday, December 9th, at 7 p.m., our Congressman Frank Pallone, who is Health Subcommittee Chair, played a leading role in passing the Affordable Care Act, will be here at Borough Hall. He, along with representatives from Enroll America and the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, will hold this special session to explain the benefits of the ACA and how to access them. The following evening, on Tuesday, December 10th, at 5:30 p.m. in the Senior Rec Center, representatives from the three insurance carriers that are authorized to offer plans in New Jersey will be available to answer your questions, and certified application counselors will be on hand to help you enroll in the program. That'll be a working session. Our Board of Health strives to provide for the health needs of Highland Park residents. We've arranged for these sessions to make it easier for you to access the information that you need to make educated decisions. This series is open to everyone, residents, business owners, and all interested parties. Please join us, it's a very special opportunity. Enrollment for the Affordable Care Act must be completed by December 15th for benefits to begin January 1, 2014. Open enrollment, however, extends to March 31 for later start dates. For more info on our event, please visit the Borough website, or send an email to acahighlandpark@gmail.com. Thanks to Congressman Pallone for coming to Highland Park for the special info session, and to Laura Cartwright from his office in helping set this up, and to Diane Heinlich, Chairwoman of the Highland Park Board of Health, for organizing outreach and setting this up. And thanks to Stacy Kaplan, who's been working on getting information out in formal now, so it will be forthcoming in the next few days. Last year, we passed a proclamation recognizing that November is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. It's estimated that more than 38,000 Americans will die of pancreatic cancer in 2013, approximately 1,200 of whom live in New Jersey. It's the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the U.S., and it's rising. On tonight's agenda, we wish to pass a similar proclamation this year to bring awareness in our community, to help focus on this disease, and encourage the development of treatments and early detection tools. And thank you, Mayor and Elsie, for mentioning the Veterans Day Parade, it was really a wonderful event. I just also want to give a special shout-out to Andrea Bay, Kim Perkins, and Jana Molina, they did a fantastic job. Thank you, and thank you Kathy Kovach, our Borough Administrator. Really, it keeps getting better every year, thanks. And they did a wonderful, wonderful job in organizing for the kids, so. Let's see, "On October 28th, the Highland Park Schools held an enjoyable celebration to rededicate the beautifully renovated high school auditorium. After more than 90 years, it was much needed. Special thanks to the Landis families for spearheading this lengthy project. An anonymous donor was mentioned, was specifically mentioned. Thanks also to the McCarty family, the Weinberg family for their very generous donations, Mrs. Betty Wall Johnson, the Highland Park Ed Foundation, and the many others that made this transformation possible for our students. In all, $1.3 million was raised, and the results are spectacular. The event that evening also featured the amazing talents of our students." Last week, our schools were closed for two days for the New Jersey State Teachers Conference. Special thanks to Sherri Johnson from our amazing library that thought to hold a special screening of Monsters University for our kids and parents that were looking for something to do, and keep them in mind next time school- next time school is out. They have programs for everyone. Remember to check with the library website. They have a lot of programs for people of different ages and interests. Special note, on Thursday, November 21st at 7:00 p.m., how to start your genealogy search. It's going to be a very interesting program. Also, good news. Last year, I was thrilled to work with Beth Leach, Chair of our Highland Park Food Pantry, to submit an application for a CDBG grant for refrigerating units for our food pantry. Our efforts were successful. We were awarded over $4,000 to purchase the units. I'm thrilled to announce that the units have been installed. With the refrigerating units, we are now able to offer meats and dairy to our population. And we also keep, can keep other perishables cooled until distribution for all of our users. While we waited, the new units are very generous. Housing Authority lent us their refrigerators and they continue to lend us space to house these units. Special thanks to those from the Housing Authority, Executive Director Donna Brightman, Maintenance Manager Rich Sweeney, Chairwoman Evelyn Setteghy, and the Board of the Housing Authority. I know this has been a dream for many of our generous food pantry volunteers, and I'm excited that we've been able to do this just in time for our Thanksgiving turkey distribution, which will be held on the morning of Thursday, November 21st, for users of our food pantry. Additionally, the special Thanksgiving food distribution will occur on Tuesday, November 26th at 9:00 a.m. and again at 6:00 p.m. Special thanks to Dawn Risch and Foreman Mike W. from the Highland Park Department of Public Works for their generous help with the turkey distribution, and to the volunteers that helped in the delivery and installation of the refrigeration units, and to the continued support from all the dedicated food pantry volunteers. Special thanks go out to Girl Scout Troop 80887 of Piscataway, under Troop Leader Valerie, for a significant food donation last week. This will greatly help our Thanksgiving distributions. At this time of year, I encourage everyone in our community, please consider a gift to our food pantry if you are able. Earlier this year, our Housing Authority was awarded a generous grant from Leading Age through a partnership with the Parker House Assisted Living Facilities. The program continues, and there are still a few spots open for seniors or persons with disabilities. Each Monday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the program takes place at the Housing Authority Building at 242 South Sixth Ave. and costs only $3.00. Please join the professionals from the respected Parker House for a day of physical exercise, games to exercise your mind, and nutritious lunch made by the chefs at Parker House. To enroll or for more details, please contact Diane Boyle of HB Housing Authority at 732-572-4420. Thanks to Donna Brightman and Kathy Blahout, the Housing Authority, for partnering with the Parker House and applying for this grant. Our Mayor's Wellness Campaign Successful Walk the Park Program presents two events in November, both with historical themes. Last week, we held this historical Highland Park Walk, thanks to our generous host, Mark Mappin, historian, author, and president of the Highland Park Public Library, for a very informative and entertaining walk. Although it was chilly, we were at maximum capacity again. Many thanks to Alan Williams for his generous support of our Walk the Park Program, too. Tomorrow evening, Wednesday, November 13th at 7:30 at the Senior Rec Center, he has organized the talk, "Role of the Raritan River in the Revolution." The talk will be given by Douglas Almac, Assistant Curator for New Jersey and Local History at the Middle Six County Cultural and Heritage Commission. The discussion will include the battles along the Raritan in 1777, including British withdrawal from the Raritan Valley and Washington's retreat from Cornwallis through Woodbridge and New Brunswick on its way to Trenton. For more information, contact us at walktheparkmwc@gmail.com. This is brought to you in conjunction with the Middle Six County Improvement Authority and the Crossroads of the American Revolution National Heritage Area and the Environmental Commission. We are eagerly looking for volunteers to host a walk. Please contact us at walktheparkmwc@gmail.com. Thanks to our Chair, Dr. Cliff Lacy, for supporting the program and for participating in last week's walk. Thanks to Stacy Kaplan for her continued support in advertising. And finally, thanks to Joan Novick from our Human Relations Commission for attending the Middle Six County College Volunteers' Day tomorrow. He'll be helping represent the Borough and the many volunteer opportunities available on our committees. And thanks for, thanks again to Stacy for putting together the handouts and materials. Thank you.
Thank you. I know I was worried that we didn't have enough for you to do. That was a joke, you guys. Okay. Yeah, I never get any help from the side of the, I'm putting you in charge of making them laugh.
Okay.
Yeah, I put the foxes in charge of the hen house. That's what happens. Okay. Councilmember Bill Mittler? I'm sorry, just before you start, in all seriousness, there's just extraordinary things happening, and there's an extraordinary number of things happening. So, I'll pause for a moment to thank the council members on this side of the days, which I am sure I will do when this side is done. But A, just the time of year, B, the nature of the needs, C, the diversity of projects. I mean, if I may borrow from the automotive realm, everybody seems to be firing on all cylinders. And clearly, the Borough is the beneficiary individually and collectively. So, thank you all very much for your tremendous efforts and results. I'm sorry, yeah? If you please.
Okay. This is what happens, Mayor, when we miss a week of council meetings. It's why the lists keep going on and on.
It's okay. At least it's good stuff.
Okay. So, you've heard me speak about our Park Partners Give Back Grant Program. I'm happy to report, we had 16 submissions for this program. And on February, February 2nd, the, all of our residents, the entire town, will be able to view the 16 submissions and place your votes for one winner in each of the five categories. And the winner, the project that gets the most votes in each category, will be awarded $2,000 to make that project happen. And we, in Highland Park, all of us, will benefit from it. So, thank you to everyone who participated and submitted their projects. And mark your calendars for February 2nd. Alrighty. In lieu of Main Street's Minute, let me bring you up on some of the exciting things happening in Main Street. First of all, today was a holiday gift boutique at the Main Street Office. It ran from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And there were several merchants participating in this program. Secondly, those of you who opened up your envelopes with the shopper's card in it and went online to register, I hope are bringing that card with you as you visit, I think, over 20 merchants in our downtown who are participating in this program. I have been using my card, and I'm happy to say, I received an email from the Shoppers Club card people telling me that I've already earned some credits on my taxes here in Highland Park. And I plan on using my card quite frequently so I can mount up all those savings on my own taxes. I suggest you all do the same. There will be a menorah lighting downtown on November 27th. It's Wednesday evening, November 27th, the first night of Hanukkah, at 6:30 p.m. If you watch the Main Street website or check your Facebook page, Highland Park Facebook messages, you'll find out more information about that. There will also be a tree lighting in Highland Park on Saturday night, November 30th. Again, watch for details. The farmer's market and artisan market that we have every Friday, for the first time, will be extending through December 20th. That gives you all extra time to make your purchases, not only from our retailers and their stores, but also from the market that, for the holiday season. And that is till December 20th. Okay, I think that's all I have to catch you up on the Main Street Minute. But let me tell you that our Public Information Committee has been hard at work. Those of you who have registered for our Nixle Messages and have been participating in our Facebook page know how busy and informative these two venues for information have been. The Public Information Committee is having a meeting this, not this Thursday, but Thursday, November 21st at 7:00 p.m. in the Berman Conference Room. Matt Hirsch is with us tonight, and he is the Chair of that committee. So, if you would like to attend, please feel free to do so. They have many things on their agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Erickson?
Yes. On tonight's consent agenda is a resolution to support the Opportunity to Compete Act, which is otherwise known as Ban the Box. And what it does is suggest that the state should adopt a law that would prevent people from having, on their employment applications, a thing that says that you've ever been arrested. That way, even the people who have been arrested in the past would get at least a chance to interview for a job. This is important for many communities in New Jersey. And on Thursday, the legislation that's proposing this, which is Assembly Bill 3837, will be, have a hearing at the, in Trenton, and hopefully will pass. This will give a number of people who, when they're maybe teens or in their early twenties, who were arrested for drug offenses or other minor offenses, an opportunity to interview for jobs that they otherwise would not get. So, it's an important piece of legislation for people who have had problems as kids.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on either the upcoming tax sale or just where we are in the budget process? Okay. I'll let the Administrator speak to one or both of those if she would like. And speaking of which, oh, I'm sorry, we're not up to that yet. Council President Malick?
Thank you. Just a brief note of congratulations to us, and a word of thanks to Sustainable Highland Park. We received our Silver Certificate from Sustainable New Jersey. And so, I'd like to thank Terry Jourvier and the rest of the Sustainable Highland Park for their efforts in achieving that. And also, our administrative staff, both Kathy Kovach and Dawn Risch and Frank Troy at Public Works. And basically, what we did is capture and I think codify, in a sense, or at least, you know, the practices that we were already doing for the most part, and got acknowledged from this from Sustainable New Jersey. So, that's a great accomplishment for the Borough. And it just acknowledges the effort we've made, you know, for past these many years to just think more responsibly about the environment and our impact on it. So, thanks to us.
Thank you. Okay, Borough Administrator's report?
Good evening. I was going to report on our tax sale. That is going to be on December 16th. We're doing something a little different this year, but first, let me explain what a tax sale is. If anyone has any taxes or water and sewer bills that are outstanding as of December 16th, we sell the liens to outside lien holders. The state of New Jersey requires that we collect all funds that are due us. And this is something that the Borough has no control over. It's selling a lien. We are not selling properties. People have no right to your home. It's just, when your taxes are considered a lien, and we're just selling that lien to a tax, an outside agency. They will be done online. So, that's something that's new this year that we're experiencing, where people will actually bid on them online. And that's all I can talk about it now. We have to see how it goes. It's a little bit different, the way that it's being processed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Borough Attorney's report?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Excuse me. I have three items. The first is, and I decided to do this during the Mayor's Report rather than earlier, prior, when we had the presentation. But unfortunately, Highland Park lost a person who was absolutely a legend in this community and around the state. A person of enormous impact who was left not just a void, but a tremendous legacy. And that's Ralph Voorhees. Ralph was a councilman from 1958 to 1963. I cannot think of a person that I know with a kinder heart, a gentler disposition, or a greater sense of community and generosity. I mean, Ralph truly was extraordinary, an extraordinary individual. At a future council leading, I am hopeful that we'll be able to partner with the family to properly recognize and remember Ralph and his impact on the Borough. Although, knowing his effect, that might have embarrassed him in some way. But I think there will be some tribute that is absolutely in order. What I would ask now, if I could, is for a moment of silence to recall Ralph. Okay, the next thing I would like to do is, we had an election last week, and I think it would be appropriate to congratulate both John Erickson and Gil Bill Mittler, who were re-elected to their roles in the council. A turf of public recognition of the remarkable work that you've done and continue to do. So, congratulations. Thank you. And as you know, there's plenty to be done still. So, we're looking forward to your continued hard work and contributions to the Borough.
Thank you.
Thank you. The third thing I would like to do is just briefly update everybody on the Mayor's Team Advisory Committee. The first thing is that there was an election of officers held last Thursday, which was reasonably well-publicized. They've got a Facebook page. The teams have organized their own messaging system. We continue to look for volunteers from the public, private, and homeschool communities. So, their ranks are growing. And hopefully, at an upcoming meeting, and we'll talk more about that soon, we'll have the opportunity to meet and greet them on a more personal basis. They have multiple volunteer efforts underway. I know, and I think it was mentioned, that they were a key aspect of the entertainment in the program at the high school auditorium dedication. I think you might say they sort of stole the show, but maybe Mrs. Johnson did that. I'm not really sure. But that's the second successful talent demonstration that they've had. And they've decided that while they certainly enjoy demonstrating their performing arts talent, they have many other talents that they want to showcase. And so, they're actively organizing a number of volunteer events and activities and programs that I'm sure you'll be hearing more about. Some of them have a social action nature. There are a number of other things that they want to do to help the community. They've signed up and are organizing to increase their visibility with respect to some basic tasks that I know that we rely on teams for, have relied on teams for, to supplement other resources like snow shoveling and leaf raking and things like that. And those lists, I think, are available through, is it Andrea or through the Police Department? So, Andrea Bay has those. So, people can reach out to Andrea Bay if you have those needs. So, I just wanted to mention those three things as well. And with that, I'm going to open the floor for public discussion. So, if you would come up to the microphone and please tell us who you are and your address, that would, and then we can recognize you for a few minutes of public comment.
My name is Judith E. Rosenstein. I reside at 223 South Third Avenue, Highland Park. I'm the lady who screams at drivers and cars on South Third Avenue. The police all know me very well. I am also known as the old hag, the witch, the bitch, the crazy lady of South Third, the C-word, the middle finger, and various other unmentionable names. The Highland Park Police, as I said, know me well, for screaming at the drivers. I have lived in this community for 45 years and chose it because of having a town center. I could have chosen any other community in New Jersey, but decided that we wanted a town where people could walk, where it was a community. My street, as others in Highland Park, had become freeways without regard to speed or stop sign regulations. My dog was run over three years ago and had $1,600 worth of knee surgery. Excuse me. I was tapped by a car on Harper Place in South Third because almost no one stops there. Benner and Magnolia and South Third stop signs don't exist for most people. A rolling stop is not a stop. A pickup truck ran through and almost missed my car when I was driving back home from work. That was two weeks ago. I have begged I have begged for speed bumps for years. The street was paved. Speed bumps didn't appear after they had been promised. My husband had many discussions with Mayor Nolan, who was the mayor at the time, in 2011, who said that they would put in speed bumps. They asked Edison to install them, and Edison said they would, but nothing has happened. The county refused to install them, and apparently you have a contract or something with Edison or had a contract with Edison and never got done. As mentioned, the street was paved. Speed bumps didn't appear. The traffic on South Third is heavy due to access to the park and the Highland Park Conservative Temple. Also, people who want to avoid speed bumps on other streets use our avenue. In addition, taxis feel they have the right to speed. Pizza must be delivered fast by Papa John's, and even the police, with no emergencies, roll through the stop signs. Our community, as many in New Jersey, are overpopulated, which means more people and more cars. Please help put speed bumps down where necessary, and please figure out how existing traffic patterns can be slowed down to allow people who are not in cars, dogs, pets, children, or whatever, to feel safe and secure. In the meantime, I will be outside screaming at drivers to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so first of all, thank you for that expression of concern and for detailing the situations and incidences that you have. And I want to reassure you that the council certainly shares these concerns for vehicular, pedestrian, and I guess animal safety. And I am not sure exactly what happened here, and so rather than comment on anything specific, what I would say is the process that we will undergo is, I guess, we'll review what may or may not have been discussed previously amongst Public Works, Public Safety, with Edison, with the, you know, the various moving parts of this. And then somebody will get back in touch with you or, you know...
I'll get back in touch with you.
So Patrick, who is not just the council president, but oversees Public Works, which would be, yes, the paving project, can follow up with you directly once we have some clarity on what didn't transpire, didn't transpire, should transpire, et cetera. Okay? Did you have something you wanted to say?
South Third is on my list.
Oh, okay. That makes it easy.
And...
Well, hang on. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Just one other thing, Judy. I don't know if you had heard, but a couple of weeks ago, we were mentioned for our new Complete Streets certification. And what the purpose of Complete Streets is, is to make the town safer for pedestrians and for bicyclists, and also to somehow find some mass transit or shuttle service, that sort of thing, to eliminate the number of cars. So part of what we're looking at on the Complete Streets Task Force are different ways to slow traffic down, mostly on Raritan, but also on our side streets. So you'll be happy to know we are paying attention to all of that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, please come up to the mic. Please introduce yourself and give us your address.
I'm Irving Kaufman. I live at 73 Lincoln Avenue. I used to live on South Third, and I will support Judy's contentions that the traffic patterns are dangerous and people just roll through stops. And I would suggest that if there's a possibility of using technology such as traffic cameras, I know they have the ones for the stop signs, but it shouldn't be too hard to put a traffic camera up that could observe and document people that go and roll and don't make full stops. It would be, A, good for public safety and good for the coffers and the financial balance sheet of the, of our fair, fair town.
I, well, I thank you for that. I'd like to say something about that. And while I appreciate that sentiment, by the way, you didn't bring dinner for everybody, which is a problem. So just be mindful next time, Kaufman family. But I would like to say that at least, and, you know, who knows how long this will be? If it'll be for another 10 minutes or for another, you know, couple of years or beyond or whatever, but at least as long as I'm there, I have no intention of letting financial decisions drive public safety concerns. I mean, we do what we do. You know, this came up a number of years ago over snow removal. It comes up from time to time over traffic enforcement. You know, we don't, we don't tell the police what to do for, you know, from a monetary standpoint. We keep separate from the courts for just such a reason. And so, you know, while I appreciate that, and I know that from time to time, there's a certain degree of cynicism that may pervade that, that feeling townwide, you know, I want to assure you that, you know, we keep these functions separate. And, you know, we ask the public safety people to do their jobs, and the Public Works people and the code enforcement people to do their jobs from a safety perspective. So that, and that's the only consideration. So, you know, if there's money that follows as a result, that's a financial penalty that somebody incurs for breaking the law, not adhering to the local ordinance, you know? So thank you for that. But, you know, we want to do the right thing because it's the right thing to do. Okay? All right, any other public comment?
Tara Canavera, 361C Crowes Road. Last meeting, I spoke about Main Street's access, and I know you guys haven't seen the plans yet. I was wondering if that was still the case, because they did give me some of the plans, but they're not the ones with the measurements in that. But they did say that they'd be willing to come down next meeting with the full set of plans, if that's what you need.
Well, actually, I had a break, is it okay?
Please?
I had a breakfast meeting with Scott Luthman, our code enforcement director, and with Jim Nichols, who is from the Design Committee. Also Diane Feldman joined us that morning. It was the first time that both Scott and I had seen the plans, but he said he took a look at them and they looked fine. There are some ways we're going to try to help with, help Main Street with some of the funding by tying in some of the construction that we would have to do for the handicap walkway to other things that we're planning on doing in the, in the parking lot area. So where it stands right now is, I've asked Scott Luthman and Jim Nichols to put their heads together and finalize the plans, and then put some numbers together, and then we'll see how much Main Street has to pay for that, and we'll see what our finance person has in, in the repair budget for the borough's parking lot that can help with all of this.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to mention during Sandy, I lived in one of the apartments that didn't have any power for 11 days, and you guys were very good at getting us information.
Thank you very much. Hopefully we won't repeat that experience anytime soon, but that's good to know. Okay, any other public comment? Yes, please. Matt, you'll go last. Well, figuratively speaking, if not literally.
I have two things.
Yes, I'm sorry, you have to state your name and address.
Oh, my name is Reva Kaufman. I'm at 73 Lincoln. And I'd like to know a little about the team council I still listed and whether there's volunteer opportunities and when you meet. And then I'm buying, that's one issue. The other thing is, there's something called the Little Free Library, and there's these little boxes that go around towns. We have them in Bradley Beach, and it's like a free lending thing, and I'm buying one of them. I'm going to put it in my front yard, but I thought it was really cool. So I was wondering if the town would consider doing that, because there's not a lot of towns doing that, and might be a really neat thing. So you just like open this box, it's kind of like a big mailbox, and there's books in it, and you can borrow them and take them. And it's a way of bringing library books throughout the town. So I thought it was cool.
I wouldn't disagree. First of all, thank you for both. So the answer is to your first questions. I'm going to do your first question first and your second question second. So the Mayor's Team Advisory Committee typically meets the first Thursday of each month unless otherwise specified. Excuse me. So when you mentioned volunteer, I'm not sure if you men volunteer for adults. We are looking for adult mentors, and we're certainly looking to continue to sign up young people aged seven, I'm sorry, grades seven through 12. Okay, so that's, that's our operational definition of team. So you can either speak with Councilmember Potts or contact Andrea Bay, and then they can help you get more detailed and specific information that'll be tailored to the family interest. And I'm going to let Councilmember Wolkowitz speak to the issue of the Little Free Library, but I don't think we can speak to it much yet, because I guess that's probably, oh, Elsie wants to comment on that as well? I'm going to let you two decide how you want to address this.
When last I was working on the library board, that, and we were doing the plan, we were doing a plan for what the library would look like, our futuristic library, you know, because as you know, with tablets and internet, you know, the, our usership has not diminished. As a matter of fact, it has increased with the technology. And one of the things that we were looking at in the, the plan that we put together for the library was, how can we make the library more accessible to the community? And that was one of the ideas. So that's actually being looked at. I don't know, I've since left the committee, so let Susie answer the rest of it.
I don't, I don't know where that stands, by the way. And I, I don't, I'm not familiar with this program that you, that you speak of. But you're saying residents would have their own books in these things and lend them out?
No. Actually, what it is that, what the, one of the things that the library was looking at in, about making the library more accessible was to have like little kiosks, little boxes...
Kiosk, yeah, we've talked about that.
Downtown in the, in the downtown community where people have access at most times, that people could bar, rent a book and then drop it back over designated area.
Conceptually, like vending machines almost.
Okay, so that, that, we've talked a little bit about kiosk. I don't know where that stands, but...
That's what it is.
Yeah.
But you're buying one to have on your front lawn?
I'm buying one because I think it's amazing, and I saw it in Bradley Beach.
Okay, so I don't understand. You're going to put your own, okay, you're going to put your own books in it and have neighbors borrow them?
Yeah, because I think it's a great idea. I'm just telling you, I think it would be really cool if the town should do it. I'm just doing it because no one else is doing it, and I put it with me.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yes.
I've seen articles on it where the town puts up the boxes, but it's not the library that's putting books in there. It's residents that bring their books that they no longer need, and then it's kind of like a book exchange type thing, so that the library doesn't wind up losing books that nobody returns.
That's one, that's something that could be considered, too.
So, you know, I don't know if this is something that should be just like an informal thing, or if there's a way to stitch this together through the town or through the library. I'm going to let...
Well, I don't, I don't know if there's anybody on the library board that would take that on themselves, but if you'd like to present it to the library board, that would, that would be fine.
So I'm going to let you two talk amongst yourselves after the meeting.
So it's like $250 each, but you can make them, so maybe people would want to make them.
So I'll just tell you when the next library meeting is.
Those teams that are...
That sounds like a project.
Because I wanted to make them, but I feel it's too complicated that they're at five one and then it's...
The next, the next library board meeting is at, on Monday, the 25th of November. It's the fourth Monday of the month at 7:30.
So Reva, maybe we can start with that. You know, you, Susie can bring you to that meeting. You can make a presentation to the library board, and then maybe they'd have some ideas about how you can...
Well, I know we've talked about kiosks, but I don't know where that stands. You know, the other, the other thing, the library is actually centrally, physically centrally located in town, and it is a small walking community. I don't know, I don't know if there are, you know, I don't know where we lack on, on having accessibility, because we are, we do have pretty good hours. So I, you know, I guess that's one of the other things we should talk about.
I think, I think that's a good offline discussion.
Yeah.
You know? So, you know, as long as everybody's winging on the library, I'm reading Mark Matman's latest book on the prohibition year of gangsters. I think it's terrific. So when I see Mark, I'm going to tell him what a great writer he is.
And just remember, he said, "Don't use it as career advice."
Yes, well, I can assure you, as an elected official, I'm not. Notwithstanding what you see on Boardwalk Empire, which, as I'm reading from Mark, apparently has a lot more truth in it than I even realized. So anyway, such as that is, I do want to let a public comment, oh, Matt, you had something you wanted to add to the conversation?
Thank you, Mayor, for saving my comments for last, because they are probably the least important. I just wanted to say that as, as, I live, I'm, my name is Matthew Hirsch. I live at 333 Felton Avenue, and I live right behind Judy over here. And I, my kids, my wife, or my dog, refer to you as none of those things. We view you as a good steward of traffic safety, and we really appreciate your, your efforts. Because I totally agree. I mean, it's, it's, any of those streets on Magnolia or Benner or Summit or Harper, you know, anytime that you have to actually, if you see a car within, within eyesight and you have to stop and try to figure out what the car is going to do, whether, who's going to go first, it's a bad situation. And so any, anything that the borough does to actually address that is, is, is a very worthy, would be, would be well, would be time, time well spent. And I, I just wanted to add one thing.
I'm sorry, just before you do that, Matt, if I could, just in fairness, Elsie, do you, as a captain, have anything you would just want to add to this particular discussion on public safety?
As the mayor...
No, go right on.
As the mayor knows, and I've been here for 20 years, we've been a very proactive Police Department as far as pedestrian vehicle safety. Obviously, we can't be everywhere all the time, but we try to target areas where we have specific problems with residents and also my own experience. So I will see to it that we get some select enforcement done on, on Third Avenue and in joining areas in the near future.
And in addition to that, I know that, that we have had the, the machine that tells people how fast they're going, that has been placed in that area from time to time, because, you know, we're trying to be as vigilant as possible when it comes to public safety.
They need more...
And unfortunately, you know, someone had mentioned about, you know, more enforcement and that we are, we are all concerned about people going fast down our streets. And surprisingly enough, in the time I've been here on this council and been a part of, of public safety, that it is our neighbors that comes in with the most tickets. You know, it is our own neighbors that oftentimes, they're the ones that are the offenders. And we try to be gentle, and we try to be nice about it, and, you know, and we do enforcement, not selectively, we do enforcement, and we'll have a room full of yelling and screaming people, but if they were following the rules, then they wouldn't have to yell and scream. And we will continue to do whatever we can, because our safety of our, of all of us come first. So...
I have to say, I would not allow my, I mean, I would not have my kids walk to school if they were young today by themselves at all. You know, I... Eight years ago, I have six daughters. They all were able to walk to school at a particular point in time. Like I said, I've been here 45 years. I would not allow it today, that way.
And, and, and just by you saying that, we know it's critical that we have to keep our streets safe, because our kids, we do encourage our children to walk to school because it is healthy and we are a walk-in town. So we want to encourage people to walk in our town. So we, we will do what we can to make sure that enforcement is there to keep everyone safe.
I'm glad we had a chance to, to air this discussion. I think this is very helpful. I'm sorry, back to our regularly scheduled Matt Hirsch.
And, and, and my comments were not, were not meant as a criticism, because I know the town is working hard to, to address traffic safety. But since it was brought up tonight, you know, and this is not just in my backyard, it's, you know, it's, it is townwide, and I know that the police and council know that and are working on that. And I just wanted to add to Councilwoman Brohm Littler's report, and I apologize, I should have, I should have let her know, I should have given her a heads-up beforehand. But I am pleased to report that, just because we mentioned NICSOL, the Public Information Committee's Vice Chair, Chaim Cohen, sat down with Monica Jackson and Stacy Kaplan last week, and just want, you know, one, you know, kick the tires on the website to see what our, what our CMS, what our content management system is capable of, and it's capable of a lot. So there's an ongoing effort to, you know, restore some dead links, provide some new information up there, and this is going to be ongoing and part of, part of our, our future meetings. But also, we finally got, residents are finally able to sign up for NICSOL notifications online. They don't have to fill out a paper form anymore, which was, yeah, which is, which was a big hindrance, but, but, but a necessary one, because the borough needs to take track of, of which neighborhood a resident lives in who signs up. So it was really important to understand who lives on the south side, north side, triangle, central business district. And so that, heretofore was only, was, was, it was only about, we were only able to, to input that information through the paper form, but now we have, we've discovered these other online avenues. So anybody at home can, can go to hpborough.com. So anybody at home, can go to hpborough.com, and sign up for NICSOL notifications online, and enter your neighborhood, and get neighborhood-specific information. So, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Excuse me, okay, I'm assuming that that's it for public discussion. So I'm going to close the public comment period, and I'm going to move to our consent agenda, which tonight includes items 1113-326 through 1113-341. And that is the resolution, the following resolutions: to approve budget transfers, bills list, taxi operator licenses for 2014, amending the annual salary resolution to authorize the sale of general improvement bonds, to advertise for receipt of bids for garbage truck, to accept the 2012 audit to approve payment of the public safety bill for the public safety building architect, to authorize payment to the County of Middlesex for preliminary servicing of Central Avenue, to, in support of the Opportunity to Compete Act, to approve change orders for the public safety building, declaring November pancreatic cancer awareness month, authorizing execution of municipal services agreement, authorizing execution of the amended agreement and contract extension for the municipal alliance grant, to approve pay estimate number 14 to HNS Construction, Inc. for the public safety building, to approve taxi owner license for 2014. Oh, and that's it. So can I have a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Brohm Mittler.
I was late for the meeting and had some open questions, so I am going to abstain.
Councilman Erickson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman Malay.
Yes.
Councilman Potts.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
Okay, Chapter 159 Small Grants Program 2013, motion to adopt. You have a motion. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Brohm Mittler.
Abstain.
Councilman Erickson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yeah.
Councilman Malay.
Yes.
Councilman Potts.